Dublin City Council Meeting will now come to order. Will everyone please stand? And we'll start with our invocation first. And Councilman Brown, is your time, please?
Okay.
And then, once we finish the prayer, we'll go on with the pledge to the fire. Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for stopping to gather, discuss the city business. We're mindful of all their needs, not only in our community, but around the world. Ask you to be with us and guide us and direct us in everything that we think is sacred and ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have some items on the agenda. On the agenda, item number six and item number seven that we are not quite ready to take any action on. So we are, the Chair would entertain a motion for that.
Second.
It has been motioned by Councilman Gerald Smith and second by Councilman Benny Jones that we postpone these items six and item seven that's on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposes by the same side? The ayes have it. Thank you, thank you, thank you so very much. I see that we do not have any member from our hospital board here tonight. Mr. Jones?
I contacted his office and they said they really don't have any updates, no new news, which is no news on COVID is good news. So we're glad to hear that.
Thank you, thank you very much. We are now ready to begin with item one, approval of October 13, 2021 special call and October 21, 2021 City Council meetings.
Move for approval.
See.
It's been properly moved by Councilman Jones and second by Councilman Smith, Chris Smith, that, don't let me talk to him. That we approve him in. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes by the same side? The ayes have it. Item two, approval of bills over $3,000.
My commission of those bills were certain.
It's been properly moved by Councilman Curtis Smith and second by Councilman Chris. Oh, excuse me, Curtis. I got it backwards. That's right. And second by Councilman Griggs that we approve the bills over $3,000. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposes by the same side? The ayes have it. Item three, approval of purchases over $3,000. Mr. Jones?
No purchases tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, what did I'm sorry? I'm reverting back now. I need to move him backwards or forward.
Okay, I'm gonna let you slide.
Adam Mayor.
I'm gonna let you slide. Okay. Item four, discussion and action on a resolution for architectural services for the new fire station. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, this is resolution number 21-61, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to accept and approve the terms of a proposal for professional services with Goodwin Mills Kaywood LLC, Donald's GMC, for the planning and preliminary design of a new Dublin fire station to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the same, set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And there is a GMC representative here tonight. And if y'all have any questions, he can come forward and answer them for you.
Does the council have any questions? All right, barring that there are no questions, we thank you, sir, for being present tonight. We sincerely appreciate that. The Chair would entertain a motion. Would you approve it, ma'am?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Smith. Edwards! Edwards, y'all, Curtis Smith. And second by Councilman Griggs that we approve the resolution. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes by the same side? Thank you so very much. Moving on to item five, discussion and action on a resolution to establish a special revenue fund for the fire department.
This is resolution number 21-55, a resolution by the City of Dublin, Georgia, by its mayor and council to establish a special revenue fund described as fire other programs from the provision solicitation of funds for the City of Dublin Fire Department, Honor Guard, charitable programs and other fire protection activities and for other lawful purposes. And this will let them, when they do fundraising, they'll have an account to put this in, like the best example, Chief.
MVA boot drive.
There you go. When they do the boot drive, that's the money will go into the account before they send it to MVA. I'm not MVA, that's a drug. We're having a time, I'm sure. I'll stop right there.
Thank you, thank you. All right, what's the council's?
Move for approval, Ms. Mayor.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Councilman Brown and second by Councilman Jones that we approve the resolution to establish a special fund for the fire department. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposes by the same side? The ayes have it. Thank you so very much. Moving down to item eight, discussion and action on a declaration of surplus.
We have several vehicles we'd ask council to declare surplus. Our intention is to sell these on the internet, on GovDeals. It's a 2012 Chevrolet Caprice. It's actually three 2012 Chevrolet Caprices, a 2007 Chevrolet Silverado 1500, a 2004 Ford Ranger pickup truck, 2007 New Holland tractor and mower, Alcoa pressure washer generator that does not work and another generator that does not work. And we have pictures and serial numbers and all that in your materials. And again, it will be sold on GovDeals. Just if you're interested in any of those items, be looking and they'll be on there in a week or two.
All right, what's your pledge?
Move for approval.
See.
It's motioned by Councilman Jones and second by Councilman Curtis Smith that.
Chris Smith.
Chris Smith. I sure am glad I got one more. That we approve the declaration of surplus. All in favor, aye? All opposes by the same side? The ayes have it.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed Amana equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and cooling unit. Allen services all brands and with the purchase of a new Amana offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Call Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff. Allen's Heating and Cooling. You're a Amana dealer. Amana lasts and lasts and lasts.
I'm Heath Richer and we just want to invite everybody to come on down to the Houston Clinic and check us out at our new facility. We've been in Dublin for a while now, obviously, but have a new office here and we'd just like you to come down and see some of the new stuff we're offering. And if you need to get checked out, we'd be glad to do that for you. Got able to do some ultrasound guided injections now and physical therapy and just a little bit better space so hopefully we can get you in and out of here a little bit quicker.
Come by and see us today at our brand new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
I believe that's our last item that we have to take some action on. And so we are now down to citizens' comments. If anyone in the audience that wish to make a comment at this time, come right, come forth and give us your name, please.
Mayor of the City of St. Louis Councilman, I'm Roy Hall. I live out at 617 Waverly. Been out there 13 years. And the reason for my visit today, years ago, when I was growing up in Dublin, this year out in the country, pretty much, you know, how you do when you get into the country, you might speed up a little bit. Now it's come to the point where we're in the city, we're in it's in the city and we've got a severe problem. I've talked to, I've had numerous people call me. I was on the board of the subdivision seven years. Had numerous people contact me. I'm not on the board now, but I've agreed to try to get something done about it. When you try to get out of live oak, you've got about two seconds before you're gonna get plastered.
Correct.
Because they're coming from the bypass so fast. When you get off the bypass, there's floorboard till we get to Dublin. So what happens is I live right on the corner. I own the lot, right as you come in, when you come in live oak on the left, the lot and the house right there, lots one and three. Okay? I hear tires squealing, horns blowing, people backed up on Whittle and Trail Road right across from my house. I'm out there a lot of times and what happens is they get desperate after a while and they cut out into traffic and the horns blowing, the tires squeal. There's been numerous wrecks. And one of the reasons there's been so many wrecks, and if you guys know about it, down at the bypass, so many people come by so fast, they run right out into the bypass and get hit. And the reason being, two reasons. One, people coming from towards the Walmart area to head out of town, they're already up to 75. And, you know, number two, people don't slow down. They're going too fast by my house. So they're going through a city intersection there, I would guess between 65 and 70 most of the time. So I've got a plaque, it's my plaque. Welcome back to copy. It's the DOT plaque of the subdivision front with right of ways, distances and sight ranges. And basically why I'm here is it wouldn't take. We've already got two stop signs. I've talked with Matt about it. Chris Woodlil is out there. Chris, have you witnessed this type of stuff going on with the speeding? And it's pretty rough, isn't it? It's pretty hard to get out. If you look toward town, toward bypass first, then toward town, you probably won't get hit. You have gotten trained ourselves to look toward town first and then watch that bypass to see what's happening. We've got cedar trees that are drawn up. It's approximately 800 foot from the bypass to where you come in my subdivision, okay? You've got 280 foot of visibility. Car running, you know, 45 miles an hour, they're gonna travel 60 foot if you look it up. You've got two seconds and you're plastered. So why I'm here is just to ask, again, and I've asked once before, but to ask to please consider putting just two more stop signs up and let's save somebody's life. Because there's a lot of young people driving and there's a lot of folks, older folks, trying to get in and out. And it's really a dangerous area. It's where live oak comes out. It's Wiregrass Trail, right? Well, Wiregrass Trail comes out to go across the Whittle Trail. So why I'm here is just to ask if y'all would consider it in. If you need to do another study, fine. I sat out in the yard one day from 4:30 to 5:15, I counted over 70 cars come through. There's got to be a way to do this. I mean, I hate to do it. We can do a petition, but I just would like to see if you guys would consider without us going around and having to do that.
I've got one question. Is that a, you know, there's some things that are handled by the state. City can't even, we can request it, I guess, but they have to have numbers and all that.
City street.
It's a city street.
What we can do at this point, Mr. Hall, is.
Yes, ma'am.
Is since you've got some speeding going out there, maybe we can request that the police department get involved to cut down on that while we search and do what we need to do. The city, if we are able to put up two additional more stop signs, okay?
Matt, you know one thing? I've talked with Sergeant Champion more than once. And I've also talked with Sergeant Shirley at the Sheriff's Department. And they have both made an effort to slow it down. But they can't be everywhere at once and I realize that. And I appreciate what our law enforcement people do for us. And I appreciate the staffing things, issues and things. But that's been addressed. I've been there 13 years and I've been working on this since the day I moved in.
Since your day.
Because I had a stepdaughter at that time that rode her bicycle and I was scared she was gonna get run over.
Right. Did you want to leave us with that paper?
If you could make a copy, it's the only copy I have.
Okay.
If you guys would like somebody to make a copy, Mr. Brad Chomp can do it for you. You, you know, make the copy.
I'll make a copy.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll take some action on it and give you some clarification because I know it's really troubling to have that thing going on like that.
Well, it's extreme speeds and it's a lot of traffic. It's not the amount of traffic so much as it's just the speeding. But the thing about it is we're not in the country anymore. And it's a danger, it's a city intersection.
And it's very dangerous.
Shouldn't be that fast or that hard to get out without what they've done when they first did it. The cedar trees were very little. You could see way down to the bypass. You can't see any of that now.
I understand.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you telling us.
Thank you so very much. And we will get that from you. And now let me explain something else so that you will understand.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm relinquishing this chair. And we got a new mayor that we've elected. You know, you're very much aware of that, right? And the new mayor is gonna be in this chair at our next council meeting. All right?
All right.
But now, and he's already here. But I can assure you that we will take care of your problem and try to get it corrected.
Right, just the stop signs would be there and also keep people from running out into the bypass because they have to slow down and then ease on them. Because a lot of times it sounds like you hit a trash can with a baseball bat and I hate that sound down there.
Right.
And the trucks and all. Thank you so much.
Thank you too, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else want to bless council? Don't everybody speak at one time? That's it? Okay, thank you, thank you.
The City of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today. So for your home, choose the most natural resource. Safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call 277-5048 today and let us help you start saving today.
You've got miles and miles of grass to mow. So you're going to need a machine built to perform day in and day out, season after season. You're going to need a Gravely built to mow the distance.
Find your new Gravely mower at Myers Equipment and Supply, 301 North Jefferson in Dublin.
We'll move right on to council comments. And I was about to talk with you, Mr. Curtis Smith.
Yeah, still got it wrong. I'd just like to say I thank everyone coming out tonight. Thank you, Mr. Hall, for your sort of presentation. I'd just like to thank all the candidates who ran for office. Everyone ran a nice clean campaign and I look forward to looking at the ones who did run. Mr. Digger, it's been a pleasure. Get my name called wrong every week. But it's a pleasure working with you and I look forward to staying in your interest.
Thank you.
That's pretty much all I've got here for Wednesday, sir.
Mr. Griggs?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming and those folks that are watching on the TVs. Stay safe. It's still the COVID out there. And have a good week. Thanks to everybody for everything that you do.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis Edwell.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming. As always, thank Dublin Police Department for being here and thank all the city employees, everything I do, every day in and day out. Without you all, we just can't keep the city going, keep the city safe. Thank Mr. Hall for coming, speaking to the council, kind of bringing this to attention. One request I have is don't let it get lost in the mix. I know everyone's busy and we've had some misses before we discussed things and it took a while. As everyone knows, I want to be here past December 31st so it would be nice to see something done and it would be kind of get this. Matthew, there's another area on that same stretch I need to discuss with you also sometime after the meeting. If you can be looking into a lot.
Got a couple of.
Another area that's really interesting as well. We can't do both at one time. You gotta run anything and pay for it, signs up or something like that. It'd be kind of better to kind of do them both at one time. So if I can get you some time this week or next week, it'd be great on that. And, you know, as, you know, looking at Facebook, I saw the picture of all the candidates there together. Somebody having a good time. Making hot food warm. I love it. I love it when you have folks who get together and bond and then graduating each other, hugging each other's necks, you know, after results come out. You're gonna lose a lot of good folks. Those, if you didn't make it, there's always other elections. Don't let one thing deter you. And, you know, just go ahead and stay involved, you know? One thing that I had said years ago was you can get just as much done or accomplished by being an active citizen addressing the council as you can up here. You just have to kind of go about it the right way. And unfortunately, things don't happen overnight. It takes some time and a lot of time with people meetings and things like that. But, you know, for perseverance, you know, if something's meant to be done, it can be done. You know, so, but I saw, got to say, appreciate it, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Gerald Smith?
Well, I too would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I appreciate you bringing your issue before council and hopefully we can get something resolved on that. That'd be a big help and maybe save some lives. Also, I want to thank the people who conducted the election the other day. I thought it was carried out very well. And my congratulations to the winning candidates. I think as we leave council, I'm gonna be leaving too with Curtis and Jerry already has departed as he just sought another office. But I know y'all will do a great job with the people that you're gonna be serving. It's an honor and a privilege and it's such a good responsibility to know that you can have a hand in helping Dublin be a better place to live and grow and raise your family and work and play. So I just wish y'all the best. And our new mayor coming up, congratulations to you. You've got big shoes to fill, but I know that you're a very smart guy and you'll get it done. I've got a lot of confidence in that. So with that, I look forward to living here and working here and seeing everybody. And I just want you to know I've enjoyed this time and I consider it a privilege and an honor to have been able to serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Gerald Smith. Councilman Benny Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Everything's about been said. I'd like to congratulate the candidates, everyone that ran and everyone that won on all that you did and look forward to working with the candidates that won. And, Ms. Heather, thank you and your staff and that you had for running a good election. For your first election, I know had a little growing pain, but you got through it. So, but we'll be better next time and do better next time. But I thank all the citizens that came out and everyone continue to do what you do. Remember, stay safe. Holidays about to approach. Remember, be safe and be careful on the roads. And thank you, Mr. Hall, for coming and bringing issue. That's the only way. I do know about the road where I go out there. I do drive a bus, which is about every, almost every morning. I have to come out there, come out of live oak. So I do understand, feel your pain. I'll be looking several times to make sure you don't get hit. So I do understand. But we'll see, we'll work on that. But thank everyone for coming and continue to stay safe.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just, too, would like to just thank everybody for being here tonight. Mr. Hall, thank you for bringing your concerns. We'll stay on top of that. Want to, again, echo what's been said. Congratulate everybody that ran for election. Y'all ran local races. Look forward to working with those that have been elected and then also encourage those that weren't successful to please stay engaged. Please let your voice be heard. You have representatives up here that will do and implement some of the work that you may see that needs to be accomplished. So I just encourage you to stay involved. I too would like to thank Ms. Digger for her service over the last several months. Thank you for filling the position and doing it nobly. And I know we sat next to each other for quite some time and I just thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
And I too would just like to also say that COVID is still out there. I'm a survivor. It was, it's not easy. It doesn't matter whether you're vaccinated or not. I was vaccinated and still caught it. So everybody still, everybody stay safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Mr. Jones?
I wanted to congratulate our now clerk, Hannah Browning, on the election. And that was tough. And I don't know if everybody knew, state auditors walked in in the middle of it. So just add a little more pressure. And congratulations to our gas department. more pressure, and congratulations to our, our gas department. Uh, Mr. Brad Grimes, are you, I don't know if they hung around, but, but y'all, twenty years ago, we would have five and six hundred leaks in our gas system. And I, when you say leaks, it's not bad dangerous things, but it's stuff you, you have to find a lot of times with a little detector, but we're, we, we just had a new, um, inspection, we had zero leaks, so they've gone from five hundred to zero, and that just cost every person ended up with money, um, having those leaks, but we're much safer, much, much more effective, and if they're not fixing leaks, they're out doing other things that need doing, so, um, if you see somebody with a gas department thing on the side of their truck, wave out and tell them thank you, because they, they're doing a fantastic job, but that's all.
Oh, thank you very much, um, Clerk Browning?
Nothing to add, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Powell?
Just like to congratulate the hard worker, my colleague here, the Browning, on her first election, and, um, thank you, uh, Mayor, for agreeing to serve, it's been a pleasure serving with you and, uh, look forward to seeing you again in the audience as, uh, Citizen Iger. I know you, I know you'll come back. And, uh, congratulations to those who, uh, unofficially have been elected after their positions, look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much, um, Mayor Kike, you have anything you want to say?
I'll wait till next week.
Councilwoman Doffrey, you have anything you want to say?
I just want to thank all those who voted for me, and I really enjoyed running with this group of great people, and, um, look forward to working with you all, thank you.
Working with them.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, I'm teasing, I'm just teasing. All right, thank you so very much, I, uh, I'm gonna make my address next week because this will be the last time that I get to talk with everyone that's in council and, um, I just want to let you know how much I appreciate all of you Dublin citizens. You are marvelous people and you do to the staff and, uh, the workers and to the council members that are up here, you all do a marvelous job. And you, the one thing that you remember is, is not about me, but it's about who? The citizens of Dublin, so that's what we try to express. So, um, uh, uh, I will, there, okay, okay, Ms. Cobb, I just, I didn't know you, stand up there, let's, let's get started. Okay, I'm so sorry.
Mr. Mascara?
Mr. Mascara? Yes, stand up, uh, thank you, because I didn't know you, I don't, uh, because don't, don't take it lightly, I didn't call you initially, and it's free, please don't, they keep me straight up here, they're trying. Congratulations to each of you, all winning, and, um, the, uh, eighteen, Mayor, uh, Kike will take over, but in January is when your council members will take over. I'm so sorry you don't get to take over next week, but you'll have to wait till the first of the year to come on board, yes. Black Daniel?
Yeah, I'm blank.
Black, I'm blank.
Blank.
Oh, they set me up.
No, you forgot, you forgot, you forgot, yeah.
All right, I, I, I know y'all, because we're getting out early, see, it's, it's five, what's that? Five minutes to sit?
Five minutes till, I thought about two minutes till.
Two minutes, so that's thirty minutes earlier than we normally count.
Correct, correct.